We do have a call.
Okay. Before we start, I see that the agenda calls for approval of minutes of July 9th and July 23rd. Was an email sent out with those minutes?
Yeah, I sent it out last Friday.
Okay. So, sorry, Sonia, I'm just trying to make sure I can see the minutes before I ask for approval of them. I see that there's a link that says the draft minutes are located right above the zoning information. And it has a link to the website, but I don't.
Yeah, they're on the website. And right where it has the date right above where it says zoning info, if you open that.
Oh, right, right. I see. Okay.
If you go down, and that's where I normally would put them.
Okay. So we could go ahead and start the September 3rd, 2021 Saint Paul Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being held remotely as is not practicable or prudent for the planning commission or its committees to be in person or pursuant to Minnesota statutes. In light of the ongoing whole pandemic, it's not feasible nor it's not feasible for any member of the planning commission to be present at a regular location. And all members of the commission will attend this meeting by telephone. Sonia, can we start with a roll call, please?
Commissioner DeJoy. Commissioner Grill.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Commissioner Holt.
Here.
Commissioner Cantner. Commissioner McMurtry. Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Presley.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rizberg.
Here.
Commissioner Said.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Underwood.
Here.
Commissioner Yang.
Here.
And of course Chair Rangel Morales.
Here. So we'll begin the meeting today with approval of the minutes of July 9th and July 23rd, 2021. Is there a motion?
I'll move to accept those meeting minutes from July 9th and 23rd.
And may I ask who's speaking? I'm sorry.
Sorry, Commissioner Thomas.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. So, a motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Thomas. Is there a second?
Commissioner DeJoy, second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner DeJoy on approval of the minutes of July. Is there's any discussion on the motion? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and take a roll call. Sonia, can we do a roll call of approval of the minutes?
Yep. Commissioner DeJoy. Commissioner Grill.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood. Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Said.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Yang.
Yes.
Chair Rangel Morales.
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, so the minutes for July, both July dates are approved. The next item on the agenda are announcements. So Commissioner Presley has agreed to serve as our secretary going forward. We are also in need of, I believe, Commissioner Mitchell. You may, Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Underwood are in Communications and Dominations Committee. But we need at least one more person. I'm just throwing it out there to see if there's any interest in someone to join that committee. It is probably the least time intensive out of the committees to serve on. But also probably one of the most important ones as it serves to fill open commissioner vacancies in the commission. So we're asking for at least one more person. If there is no interest, I will be reaching out to individuals who are serving only in one committee at the moment. We do ask people to try to sit in at least two committees per commissioner. So any interest, go ahead and send me an email so that we can get more, well, we can get the agenda items from communications going, and hopefully we can have enough members by October. I know that there's probably a lot of questions about what is going on with regards to the meetings and whether they're going to be virtual or in person going forward. Like everybody else, I was anticipating that we were going to be meeting in person today. But some items occurred throughout the week, so it was an ongoing resolution that ended up occurring, I think, on Wednesday, when we finally learned that we wouldn't be able to have it virtually. And I'll let Luis talk more about that. Luis?
Good morning, commissioners and members of the public. Thanks, Chair. I will just echo what the chair said, that there's been kind of behind the scenes conversations. And the mayor's office was talking with the city council and trying to get on the same page. And so there's a new mayoral declaration that acknowledges the continued pandemic as well as some ongoing related actions. The city council took action on that on Wednesday. The big item coming out of that is that their city council meetings will continue to be virtual through the end of November. With the exception of one meeting on the budget, I believe, in October, which will be at the Colwell Park. Boards and commissions are sort of following along in that same, that same format, being continuing to stay virtual. Though this morning, I was going to cover this in my announcements, but I'll just say this quickly, that steering committee met and discussed this a little bit. You know, one of the ongoing concerns is open meetings law. And if some reforms are needed there to update it, to allow for at least a hybrid option, if not ongoing virtual, absent a pandemic for accessibility purposes. And so one thing I agreed to do is to reach out to our intergovernmental relations staff person to see if they've been plugged into any of the conversations going on about sort of open meetings law with the League of Minnesota Cities and Metro Cities to see if we couldn't assist in that and kind of raise our commissioner voices in that, in that, in that process. So that hopefully answered your, what you were looking for, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the director? All right, CNN, Luis, you have any other announcements? Otherwise, we can move on.
I really don't. I think you've covered what I was thinking about saying, so thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be zoning committee. I'll turn to Commissioner Riley.
Thank you, Chair. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. We had one item before us on the August 26th zoning committee meeting, which was an application by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of the City of St. Paul to rezone the property at 231 Front Avenue from B2 to T2 in order to accommodate affordable homeownership, housing development, and allow for additional uses on that site. And the zoning committee, there was one letter in support from the district council, formally and also in the email from the current executive director of the district council in support of the zoning change. And the zoning committee recommendation was unanimous for approval of the rezoning request. And we did not have any site plan review announcement available to us at that time. And I think, I think that covers the basics. There weren't really any, wasn't much discussion. So that's what I have. Thank you. I will need a motion, I think.
I think we just need to know how the committee voted, and that would be the motion coming out of committee.
Yes, hello, this is Marilyn, this is Marilyn Rosenthal taking over for Meneca on this case. I do have the presentation and am available to answer any questions that you may have. It was unanimous vote, seven to zero. And if you need anything from me, I'm here.
Thank you. So the motion coming out of committee is to approve the rezoning from B2 Community Business to T2 Traditional Neighborhood at 231 Front, 231 Front Avenue. Is there any discussion on the motion? Or questions for staff? All right, CNN, Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Yang.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Commissioner Said.
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood.
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Grill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, the motion is approved to rezone from B2 to T2 at 231 Front. And is there any additional comments you'd like to say, Commissioner Riley?
Yes, I have the agenda for the September 9th meeting at 3:30, which will cover rezoning from RT1 to Family Residential to RM2, multiple family residential, 576 Lexington Parkway at Edmund Avenue. And then also an item that's a conditional use permit for agricultural purposes at 364 Mini Ha Ha. And those will both be on the agenda for September 9th, our next meeting. And that's it. Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, it's a comprehensive neighborhood planning committee. Commissioner Grill.
This is Commissioner Grill. So I'm going to get to the item in just a minute. We had a meeting this week on religious accessory uses zoning study. That was our Wednesday meeting this week. That item will be coming to the planning commission soon. And then another quick update is I will be stepping down as Chair of the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee. And Rich Holtz will be stepping up as the Chair in the coming weeks. And then Commissioner Presley is going to be the Vice Chair of the committee. And those two will work closely to run the committee moving forward. And then there's a meeting currently planned for September 15th. We don't have any items on that agenda at that, at this time. And then the item in front of us today is the Wonderful Unit Info Housing Study Phase 1 Amendments. And I believe Michael Wade is here with a quick update on that.
Mr. Wade?
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Grill. Michael Wade, City Planner. Commissioner Grill asked for a very short overview of this, so I'm going to race through it. This is something like a lot of these zoning text amendment packages that can be unpacked and can get into the weeds. Happy to answer any questions. And I'm here with the full study team, Emma Seagworth, Luis Barra, and I believe Josh Williams is here as well. But this is a package that kind of contains a variety of things. And so we're going to stay very out of the weeds at the moment for this quick overview. So let me get sharing my screen. Okay, so this is Phase 1 of the Wonderful Unit Housing Study. This is a zoning study focusing on infill housing. That is, we're not looking at large apartment complexes, that kind of thing. We're looking at how can our neighborhoods retain their character, and also how can we house more people? Some of the objectives of this first phase, we're looking at how can we permit smaller homes or more narrow homes? How can we open up smaller lots, make them easier to build housing on? How can we open opportunities for cottage cluster style housing? And there's a variety of names for those, but just smaller houses arranged as a cluster, as a pocket neighborhood? How can we facilitate greater variety of ADUs on more lots, this accessory dwelling unit, smaller housing that is paired with a principal home, but subordinate to it? And then there are some amendments in here that just go toward improving our zoning codes organization and how staff relates to the zoning code. Wanted to note a few items here. This is a part of a broad package, the Wonderful Housing, that is is a result of city council, planning commission, mayor's office, a broad coalition, the entire city wants to get into opening up affordable housing of all kinds. This Phase 1 package isn't expected to directly result in the deeply affordable housing. That is, we're not necessarily looking at city subsidy, rental assistance, that kind of a thing. We are expected to contribute to more affordable rental housing, starter homes, additional units, dwelling units that will eventually enter the naturally occurring affordable housing category, and then just gentle infill housing in general, so that we can provide housing for more of our neighbors. One note, we've had a couple of questions on this. Originally, this Phase 1 was going to consider the owner, the existing owner occupancy requirement for properties with ADUs. That was taken out of Phase 1 at the planning commission's request and moved to Phase 2, the broader Phase 2. And Phase 2 will take some of these Phase 1 amendments and run with them. Everything that happens in Phase 1 can be revisited in Phase 2. Right now, that broader study is in the technical expert engagement period. We're talking to architects, we're talking to affordable housing nonprofits, we're talking to small scale developers, emerging developers, we're talking to neighborhood organizations. Phase 1 is a group of, you could say, lower hanging fruit items that we have every reason to believe there is broad support for and can make housing in St. Paul more flexible in the interim while we come out with the broader Phase 2 text amendments. So there are, if you read through the memo, you saw there are a variety of things. Each, each sort of added to our code over the last decades. And we're going in and sort of precision changing. These are small tweaks. I'll run through them verbally, and I'm happy to get into any one of these that the commission would like to talk about, or that Commissioner Grill would like to spend more conversation on. We want to delete the 22-foot minimum width for homes in residential districts, and that is single family and two-family homes in residential districts. Want to permit multiple principal residential buildings on a zoning lot in RL to RT1, and that is as long as those zoning lots and the, the principal residential buildings meet all of the other dimensional requirements. Proposing to restore lower side set backs for single-family homes in M1 to RM2 to where they were before at four feet. Delete the minimum distance of 12 feet between buildings on a zoning lot that is regulated by building code and residential code. Simplify the calculation with which an average front set back is calculated. Right now, it's a pretty complicated formula that can be burdensome on staff, and so we want to reduce the burden on our DSI zoning staff. Proposing to delete the minimum lot area requirement of 5,000 square feet to establish an accessory dwelling unit. Change the maximum permitted size for an accessory dwelling unit from 800 square feet to 75% of the principal unit. Increase the maximum square footage of the rear yard that accessory buildings may occupy. Reorganize our section on accessory buildings for improved readability. I'll skip down to K quickly. We want to correct student housing overlay in accordance with the recent definition of family zoning text amendments. That's simply a correction for something that staff had overlooked in that previous zoning study, just changing one number. And then an additional change that actually is not a zoning text amendment is something that the planning commission could choose to do, is to discontinue duplex and triplex conversion guidelines and the mandatory staff recommendations that are embedded with them. I'm sure many of the commissioners are familiar with these guidelines. They were adopted iteratively over the last few decades. The Board of Zoning Appeals also adopted them. And they provide some good guidelines for staff as we analyze zoning cases that if approved, would allow a single-family home to be converted into a duplex, or duplex to be converted into a triplex. They are, they concern dimensions of the lot, parking, dimensions of the additional units, those kinds of things. And they're helpful guidelines, but they also require us to make certain recommendations given certain requirements over and above the zoning code, which time and again have proven to make these discussions more complicated than they need to be. So we're proposing that the planning commission discontinue the duplex and triplex conversion guidelines just as mandatory staff recommendations. And then we'll take those guidelines and implement them in different parts of our staff protocol. And we've got a few ideas for that. That would be a second item. We're also partnering with our Department of Safety and Inspections on how best to continue to manage these conversions. The schedule for this, right now, September 3rd, we're reviewing the memo, releasing for public comment, and setting a date for the public hearing. Staff is recommending that public hearing date be set for October 15th instead of October 1st, which is written in the memo. So this is a correction. We're recommending setting the date for October 15th. Without any unforeseen difficulties, we are looking at having this to city council by December. And with a mayor's signature, they would then be enacted 30 days later. So it would be a little New Year's zoning text amendment for us to celebrate and then to move forward to Phase 2. And then, whoops, I have slides on each of the individual ones. Again, happy to talk about these. But I'll hand it back over to Commissioner Grill. Thank you.
All right, so this is Commissioner Grill. I know there are a lot of items included in the Phase 1 amendments. I think it's always important that these items do come back around so that there will be other opportunities to see them. And then, as Mr. Wade mentioned, as part of Phase 2, if there are items that we need to tweak, we're also able to do that. It looks like there might be some folks who have questions, so I'll leave that open to the Chair to call on, folks. And then I will, once we've had some discussion, bring up the motion that would be on the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Grill. Commissioner Hood?
Thank you, Chair Rangel Morales. Thank you for presenting, Mr. Wade. I had two quick questions that I hope you would be able to address. One is the ADU 75% requirement. Could you explain that a little bit? What happens if someone, I'm thinking, a larger home on Summit Avenue that may be 4,000 square feet? Does that mean that the ADU that they would need to be, construct would need to be 75% of that 4,000? Or would it just be up to that size, but an 800 minimum? Could you explain how that would work?
Chair, Commissioner, yes, thank you for the question. So that is one of a handful of dimensional maximums that apply to accessory dwelling units. So in a vacuum, yes, that's right. This maximum says that the accessory dwelling unit could go up to 75% of that 4,000 square foot principal unit, whether you're attaching it onto it or it's detached. However, there, there are two main other requirements. One is that accessory buildings overall, which an ADU fits into, have a maximum currently of only 1,000 square feet. This text amendment proposes to raise that to 1,200 square feet, but that serves as a hard number maximum, too. So if 75% of the principal unit adds up to over 1,000 square feet, or over 1,200 square feet, whatever that number is, that caps it. There is an additional cap at 35% of the rear yard. So if 75% and/or 1,012, or 1,200 square feet goes over 35% of the rear yard, that will also cap it. So it's, it's one of a variety of dimensional standards there.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. The next question that I had, it really wasn't a question, it was more of a concern. So the city of Minneapolis, through their 2040 plan, in a sense legalized triplexes. But one of the things that I keep hearing is a reoccurring issue is they've legalized it, but they haven't changed the dimensional standards enough that you're actually seeing that, that type of new housing come on to the market. And that's something that I think that we need to be very keenly aware of in the city of St. Paul, that, you know, we can legalize duplexes and triplexes, but if these dimensional standards are still strict, we're, we're really not going to see what the policy is intended to provide. So something, as I'm sure you're probably keenly aware of, just that's a concern that I have, kind of with this study. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you answering the questions.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Wade? Commissioner Riley?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a question. I just have a comment that I really appreciate the detail and the information in the staff report. I'm really excited to see a lot of these things come to fruition, especially as regarding sort of so-called undersized or non-standard, smaller lot sizes. In St. Paul, I think this is going to give a lot of people a lot of feelings of relief, potentially, depending on how it goes. I really appreciate the detail and the attention to all the different aspects in this particular study. So thank you.
Well, I have a question for Mr. Wade, if no one else does. That sort of feeds off what Commissioner Hood was asking. Could you talk about, Mr. Wade, the two principal structures in a, in a, in a, the same lot? And how the open space requirement or sort of the, how much of the backyard could be taken up? How that would apply if you, if you build two structures in a, in a one lot?
Chair, yes, I'd be happy to take a stab at it. So one of these amendments, as you're referring to, is that we allow more than one principal residential unit, more than one single-family home or duplex in certain districts where they're currently prohibited, in RL through RT1. In other, other districts, RT2 and up, T districts, this is already allowed, so we're just sort of bringing it into conformity there. The, if you're referring to the, the maximum percentage of the rear yard that I refer to for accessory dwelling units, I kind of have two answers for how those interact. One is that that applies to accessory buildings rather than principal buildings. So that, that maximum percentage doesn't apply. However, the rear yard setbacks still apply. That is, if you're in, I think it's 25 feet is a required rear yard setback in the lower-density residential decreases, I think, to, to nine feet when you get into the RMs. That's still required, and to have less of a rear yard would require variance still. And so that's, that's for any principal unit dwellings. Again, single-family duplex, the entire building is the dwelling. That also, and I'm sort of going through the categories of dimensional requirements in my head, a big limiting factor on that, on the ability of a property owner to add a second principal dwelling unit is the minimum lot area per unit that's required, per principal unit. So the accessory dwelling unit is subject to other dimensional standards that I described earlier. Principal units have to have a minimum amount of lot area per unit. So right now, for single-family homes, that's a minimum of 5,000 square feet. You remember that number from being the minimum lot area for accessory dwelling units, which we're proposing to delete here. We're not proposing to delete that for principal dwelling units in this Phase one. We're not proposing to reduce that at all. And in Phase two, if we do look at that, we'll keep very strongly in mind how these different dimensional requirements interact with each other. So for instance, if you have a lot with one single-family square home, excuse me, one single-family home, and you want to add another one, you'll need to have at least 5,000 square feet per single-family home. You'll need to have at least 6,000 square feet per duplex, and it continues up with triplex for unit, et cetera. Before I go rambling on, does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. And I, and, and that, for those who weren't in the com plan, that, that was one of my, the, the, the two principal structures in a, in a, in a yard was my main concern.
Chair Wrangell Morales?
Sorry, everyone, my, my Wi-Fi dropped. What I was trying to say is that, that's one of the policies that I particularly have an interest in, in terms of what it could do to, well, just one of the policies I have an interest in. And I'm more than happy to comment on it, but I, I think for now, I'm okay letting it go to public hearing, and we can have a further discussion as this goes down the road. And also depending on what happens on the Phase two, a portion of this study. So I see Commissioner Mitchell has a question. Commissioner Mitchell?
I just have a, thank you for the presentation. And I just have a comment. I'm always going to kind of think about public. And again, when we're asking public to put on whatever it is, I think we should have visuals that show them what this actually means. You know, some type of visual saying, this is the kind of how the structure, how the housing is structured now, and just how it would be with this policy change. So that when we want public comment, they do understand what you're asking. So that is one of my comments. And my second one is, again, figure out better how to get community input, especially in this COVID-19 time, so that community is know and understand and have access to public comment. I think based on my year here, it feels like community, they just do not have the opportunity, the broader community have an opportunity to give us comments. And I think we need to figure that out because we're making some huge decisions. And I want to hear from community better.
Okay, Mr. Wade, would you like to comment on any outreach or any, anything that will be done between now and the public hearing date to see that we can get additional community input on this? Or the, any educational components that will be done, whether in seminars or presentations?
Chair and Commissioner Presley, yes, thank you for this. I'll, I'll give a brief answer and then turn it over to Luis Pereira for something fuller and especially about the full study. We actually just met with our liaison to the planning districts in a pretty full conversation about, especially as it relates to Phase two, which will entail much larger changes than these changes. For instance, these Phase one, Phase one changes, we've heard pretty broad support from some. But we are looking to our district councils and, and opening up a dialogue with them to really craft positive public engagement that reaches more people. One thing that's immediately coming out from that on this Phase one is that we'll be putting together a webinar. Emma Sequorth and Luis and I will be putting together a webinar. And we do look forward to getting some good visuals in there. I know that it can be tough. These are pretty abstract numbers sometimes, and it's kind of like, I always imagine, that tiger puzzle where you move one piece to move another piece, and then the whole thing is messed up and you got to move it around again. Sometimes it feels like that on a lot. And so having visuals is going to be very important. And we hear your continued encouragement, Commissioner Presley. I do want to turn it over to Luis.
I miss, I miss y'all, so just make sure.
I'm so sorry. I am so sorry, Commissioner Mitchell. Everyone has a small round dot on my screen right now. I'm so sorry, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Luis, is there anything you'd like to add today?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Mitchell, for that, that comment and feedback. Absolutely, we, I agree with you 100%. This is, this is really technical stuff. And, you know, folks shouldn't just take staff's word for it, that these are, this is low-hanging fruit in Phase one. We should show that and, and bring people along to that, to that point. You know, or, and or, you know, maybe you look at it and you disagree with us. That's great, too. But we, so we're going to talk with the district council leadership middle of this month, kind of get, get this on their radar again. Many of them know about this already. But, you know, it's a big study, lots of, the scope of it's really big, and I think, we think there's going to be a lot of community interest in it. We, we still sort of feel like this is the beginning of the study, even though we've done some, a lot of behind-the-scenes work with, with DSI and with the, the rest of the planning team. So we have a series of different ideas about engagement, but we haven't actually sort of put the full plan together yet because we want to actually extend that conversation to the district council leadership and/or other organizations, community organizations, to help us to, to develop that out a little bit further. And so that's kind of what the middle of this month will be, is to say like, you know, this is this first phase. Here's the public hearing. Here's more information about it. Phase two has a lot of, sort of a lot of policy issues, bigger policy issues. So we want to get you involved alongside the technical experts that we're working with already, who, who kind of live and breathe this stuff all the time, from developers to finance, to the DSI staff experts on the, sort of the plan and code review side of things. So, you know, virtual opportunities, surveys, you know, we are going to, like I said, we are going to do a, a virtual kind of meeting to talk about Phase one in more depth, that will make sure folks have on their calendar. And, and yeah, and other suggestions from the commissioner, all, all really well-received. So I appreciate it. And feel free, if you have, you know, a group in mind that you think would really be interested in hearing about this, let us know who that is, and, and we can definitely reach out. Or if you'd like to connect us, that'd be great, too. Thank you.
All right, any additional questions for Mr. Wade? About any of the bullet point items that this study is releasing to public hearing? All right, seeing none? I'll turn over to Commissioner Gro for a motion.
Okay, so the motion, based on an updated staff recommendation, is to release the memo and state, set a date for the public hearing on October 15th, which is corrected from the October 1st date that we discussed in the committee meeting. The change is to allow more time for staff to engage with local councils and groups. And so that's, that would be the motion on the floor, is the October 15th date.
Thank you, Commissioner Gro. Is there a second on the motion?
Second by Holst.
Motion by Commissioner Gro, seconded by Commissioner Holst to release the staff report and set a public hearing date? Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Gro?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Mr. Yang? I got it. Mr. Yang?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair Wrangell Morales?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So that motion is approved to release the staff report and set a public hearing date. Is there anything else, Commissioner Gro?
Nothing else for CNDC.
Okay, thank you for your report. Moving on to Transportation Committee, I'll turn to Commissioner Rizberg.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm, I'm using my phone today because my team isn't working as well.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So the Transportation Committee last met on August 23rd, where we had a really interesting discussion about the Rice Street visioning study by Ramsey County. And this is a project going from Pennsylvania to Weelock, and it was described as a community-driven vision for Rice Street, really to improve pedestrian and bike safety, really bolster transit on Rice Street and, and promote more economic growth and community investment. And we heard about three concepts for doing just that and provided feedback for three segments of, of Rice Street and, you know, three different alternatives, each having some pros and cons of the Rice Street feedback. But this is, this was a really interesting, interesting study. And when it comes to fruition, I think it's really going to transform Rice Street as we now know it and make it a safer place for pedestrians and bicyclists, in particular. So I just wanted to say a little bit more about that meeting and we'll be hearing more about it in the chat. The hope is to begin reconstruction in 2023. So we'll see how the remaining public engagement effort goes over the last, next several months. And hopefully we'll have a follow-up at committee. Our, because of the upcoming holiday, we're skipping our normally scheduled meeting for Monday and, and moving to September 20th. There is...
Commissioner Rizberg, I think you muted yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, what was the last thing you heard?
You started talking about your upcoming meeting.
Ah ha. Well, apparently there's a time limit on, on, on muting oneself when you're joining by phone. So the upcoming meeting is September 20th. We're skipping this coming Monday because of the holiday, and there is not an agenda at this time.
Okay. Is there anything else other than that update?
No, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Commissioner Rizberg. Moving on to Communications and Nominations Committee, Commissioner Underwood?
Sure, thank you. Good morning. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for, for encouraging members to join the Communications and Nominations Committee. We've lost a couple of members due to moving out of the district or other changes. And to that point, we have a, a number of important appointments to make over the next few months. We have one person whose term is expiring. And then we have, I believe it's four open seats as a result of moving out of St. Paul or career changes that make this time unavailable. So this is important work, and as a number of you have recently been appointed, you've been through the experience. And so I encourage you to join us in helping make it continually a better process. Other than that, I have no report.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Underwood. And again, please reach out to me and to Luis about any interest in being in nominations and communication. Again, if, if there is little to no interest, I will be reaching out to commissioners, who currently only sit on one committee, about serving in communications and nominations. Commissioner Underwood, could you just comment on when the committee, committee meets? And like, how long the meetings would last?
Yeah, thank you. We meet as needed, and we have traditionally met at 8:00 AM prior to these commission meetings. And we, we receive a lot of information ahead of time and then meet to discuss, answer any questions, and make decisions that, that staff take back to PED and the mayor's office. So there's, so it's convenient in that respect, too.
Okay, so you're a commissioner who perhaps is limited in time, that this would be a good committee to, to join as its low, low commitment in terms of the other committees? Is there anything else you'd like to comment on, Commissioner Underwood?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the task force and liaison reports. Luis?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to jump back to the Communications and Nominations Committee, and sort of getting folks interested in that, there's a piece of it, too, that I feel like the scope of the committee in supporting staff in the city on engagement to the broader community. And so we have, from time to time, I got involved with sort of community workshops, education around planning and zoning, and sort of how the planning commission advises the city and makes decisions. And so it's an opportunity for some of that. I feel like that's sort of a fun aspect of the committee, where, you know, you can represent the commission as a volunteer for the city, but also, you know, sort of show the community that, what this is kind of about, you know, in terms of getting involved, making decisions to help the city, guide the city, getting other people involved with it, sort of thinking about the next generation of leadership and all of that. So a little bit more, just to add my perspective to the importance of the work of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Moving on to the task force and liaison reports, I'll turn to Commissioner DeJoy for any updates on Hillcrest redevelopment.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have anything new to report. The committee has not met since June. I know that there is a lot of planning going on, and more recently, our September 21st meeting has been canceled. They are drilling down on things like grading and stormwater management, and we are scheduled to meet again on October 19th. On a side note, this is not related directly to the committee, but there have been community conversations around Hillcrest going on that are jointly sponsored by District 2 Community Council, the St. Paul Port Authority, and council member Nelsie Yang. And I haven't seen any recommendations or any reports come out of those conversations, but I will be reaching out to Lisa over at District 2 to see if, you know, just to see how the community is responding to some of the plans that have been presented. So that's my report. And again, we're meeting on October 19th.
All right. Thank you for that, Commissioner DeJoy. Commissioner Grill?
The Riverview Corridor Stationary Planning Task Force has a meeting Tuesday, September 14th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. As of yesterday, there was not an agenda listed yet for that item or for that meeting. But if that is posted, it'll be on the Ramsey County website for the Riverview Corridor.
Thank you. So I'll move on to old business. Any new business or items that commissioners would like to add to the next agenda? All right, seeing none. That will conclude the September 3rd, 2021, St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. Thank you, everybody, for joining, and I hope you have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.